Recording had not started. We are in the clear and now we are recording. Welcome, everybody, to the May 25th Admiral Broadband Authority Meeting. I'm going to be your host for today as Mike is mobile, as you might be able to tell from his video. And I believe we're going to start by throwing it over to Richie for our preamble.
All right. Thanks, Jason. So as authorized by Virginia Code Section 15.2-1413 in Alamo County's continuity of government ordinance, this meeting is being held electronically electronically over the Zoom platform. The public has real time audio visual access to this meeting over Zoom, real time audio access over telephone. Everyone on the phone and attending via Zoom from the public is in listen only mode. If there are members of the public attending by Zoom who wish to speak during public comment, please use the raise hand feature to notify the meeting facilitator. For those joining by telephone, please use star nine to indicate you would like to comment. State your full name and the magisterial district in which you reside before getting into the substance of your comment. If you don't know your district, provide a general location for your home or business. Each speaker will have three minutes to comment. This meeting is being recorded. A copy will be posted on the county's website. And with that explanation, I will ask the board members to identify themselves and their general location. So start with Bucky Walsh.
Okay, Walsh, I'm at my home in Alamo County.
Waldo Jaques.
Yep, Waldo Jaques, I'm here at my home in Stony Point.
Let's see, Trevor Henry.
Trevor Henry at my residence in Alamo County.
Bill Fritz.
I'm here, home in Charlottesville.
Supervisor Price, Donna Price.
I am at here. I am present from my home in Scottsville Magisterial District with very unreliable internet. And I hope to be able to make it to the meeting.
And let's see Supervisor James Andrews.
I'm here at my home in Samuel Miller District of Porsha.
All right. So Mr. Chair, we have everyone present. We have a quorum and we can proceed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Deloria and Mr. Ina Fuentes. As you can see from the agenda that is now commandeered your screen. We're on agenda item two, since we've established our quorum and called order. I hope everyone's had an opportunity to review the agenda. We have made some little updates as we went along this week. And I would ask move now that we approve the agenda that is shown here.
They're all right.
Trevor, yes.
Now, sorry, the question before we approve the agenda, the minutes that I received, I believe, were for March. Not April, but I may have looked at an older email. I'm just wondering, did men, and I maybe again was looking at the wrong, the wrong set of minutes. Did, did others receive the April minutes?
You know, I read through the minutes, Trevor. I thought they were the April minutes, but it says, it says April 26.
It says April 26. I appreciate the confusion. At the beginning of the document, though, it says March 26.
So that should be amended to April.
The file names that April, and that's what caused my confusion.
Yeah.
My apologies. I did not catch that as I was editing, working off of Mr. Fritz's template. So my apologies for that. I will update those and redistribute. Chair, I've got one change, which is simply that to the agenda, we're going to be moving the a portion of the BAO report to just after the body 2021 update as a courtesy to Mr. Brewer from Lumen, who is on the call and who is double booked for tonight. If that is to your satisfaction.
That sounds okay to me. Anybody object?
Move to approve as amended.
Second that. All those in favor say aye.
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 One canine vote to any opposed? Nay. Hearing none. Okay, so we've got our agenda. We have an opportunity here for any announcements from authority members. I have none. Is there anybody else who'd like to grab the podium for a moment? Not seeing or hearing anyone? Then we'll move on to our public comment section. There are a number of folks from the public participating in this call, which is exciting. If you'd like to speak to the broadband authority, please, what was it? Star? Richie, you read it just a minute ago. Star nine or?
If you're on the phone, star nine, otherwise raise hand feature to, yeah.
Yeah. So we'll give folks a second to see if anybody would like to speak. And not seeing anything right this second. All right. Well, let's move on then to item five on the agenda, the approval of the April 26th, 2022 minutes. Thank you, Trevor, for that catch. Were there any substantive comments to the changes to these minutes? Jason?
None that I'm aware of. I was the secretary pro tem for those. So if there are any changes, I will note and update and redistribute the.
No, 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 we're not going to do that. We're going to ask everybody who's on the call right now if they have any changes. If you haven't received any, then there are none for you to report. Anyone else have any changes to those minutes? So everyone had a chance to review those minutes and be happy to vote to approve them? Or not, as the case would be, very good. I'll move to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the April 26th, 2022 meeting minutes are approved. And that will take us into the old business and we'll start with the body 2021 update. Jason, is this going to be you or Mike?
This will be me and then I'm going to throw it over to Mr. Brewer, who is on the line. To begin with, as you guys heard last month, there were some delays associated with some of the project areas that were specifically related to material shortages and labor shortages. Those delays have been resolved. All of the anticipated project areas have launched. That Lumen has expressed to us that they have made efforts to mitigate future shortages. So we will hope that we don't see any additional delays associated with this project. And we did want to touch on the webinars that we've been hosting for these. If you haven't had a chance to attend, please feel free to. It's the first Friday of every month. They have been a pretty big success for us from a communications and engagement standpoint. We were able to present last week at the Broadband Advisory Council on this. I'm going to share one slide which stood out for me. So the monthly webinars, as we said, have been the primary venue for updates and also for questions and answers. The first webinar was incredibly well attended. We had over 100 attendees at one point. And every week we've had, every month, we've had a very robust Q and A section. What surprised me when I was reviewing in preparation for this presentation before the BAC is that our YouTube videos have been viewed over 200 times. That is something that really it gives me some plea, pleasure to see that because it means that as we've been putting these out, those people that can't be on the call are still going back and they're watching the old videos and they're catching up with these, with this project area. So we're pretty chuffed about that. This is the current work schedule. And as you see, Snow Hill Lane and Gilbert Station, those areas have launched. So Gilbert Station actually launched at the end of April. Snow Hill Lane launched at about the same time. There were some hiccups in particular in Gilbert Station with the ordering process, but those seem to be resolving. And here is our up to date take rate. So in the launched areas, we have a total of 71 orders and 234 passings. It's worth noting, this is a project with over, I believe, 1,800 passing. So when you look at these project areas, these are the smaller project areas. The last four project areas are the much larger ones. And so the bulk of the orders are going to come from those. At this point, we are looking at a 30% take rate, but month to month, all of these numbers have been moving up. Up next is Advanced Mills and Milton Hills. Both of those are under construction with a lot of work happening in Advanced Mills right now. The Milton Hill project area is awaiting some V dot permits. And the subsequent project areas are in engineering and design. What we're expecting out of the subsequent project areas, those last three big ones is for those to be split up into smaller project areas. So that way they can be launched in a, in a sort of ordered fashion. So instead of launching all of Stony Point, we'll launch portions of it at a time. And now I'm going to promote Mr. Brewer so that he can give us an update. Good evening, Steve.
Are you able to hear me?
Yep, we've got you.
Okay, great. Now, first of all, I want to thank you for adjusting the agenda this evening. As, as Jason mentioned, I am double booked. I also have responsibilities in the state of North Carolina and session has commenced, most recently here in North Carolina. So I appreciate your, your willingness to, to adjust the schedule so I can get to another meeting in fairly short order. Chairman Walsh, I owe you an update and, and Jason, Jason hinted at this earlier, but I owed you an update on labor efforts. We have been making an effort to add additional contractors. To date, we have not been able to sign a contract with additional contractors. However, existing contractors have had some success in adding labor, we've told, we are told. And just this afternoon, we, we did receive an update from the planner for the, for the projects later in our schedule to, so in fairly short order, we hope to be breaking those up into into smaller projects, as, as Jason had mentioned. So, you know, overall, you know, there's certainly progress being made. And we look forward to continuing that to resolution.
Well, thank you for the update. You know, some progress is some progress and we it would be great when you have all of the labor that you need.
Yeah, absolutely. I agree. Unfortunately, that, that is proving to be a challenge in, in many markets and certainly in, in your market. But again, I have been told that our existing contractors have been, have shown some success in adding additional labor. And again, we are looking to add additional contractors as they help as well.
Well, thank you for the update. Are there any questions? Mr. Brewer, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We wanted to also just take a minute. It is related to body 2021. It's also related to some outages that have occurred in the area. There were some copper cables, some telephone cables and DSL cables that were cut during recent work in the advanced mills area. The first reports to us came in on Thursday of last week with subsequent reports that followed. It ended up being two specific areas with, we believe, two cuts. Those, one of those cuts involved over a cable bundle that was, had over 200 cables in it. As, as far as we understand, all repairs have been completed and service has been restored. And so we just wanted to offer Mr. Brewer a chance to just mention, address that as, as an issue of anybody else had any questions about it as well.
Now, that is data accurate. Unfortunately, we encountered a situation where our contractor, while doing a fiber installation, cut a 200 pair of copper cable was my understanding. And unfortunately, took, took a number of, of our citizens out of service. That, that was restored and service, I got an indication yesterday that all services were back up and running as a result of, of that cut.
Offer if the members have any other questions related to body 2020 to that cut.
I, yeah, Jason, I have a question. This is just based on my own experience of the, of the process here. Like, how does that happen? I thought the, the deal was initially, you know, somebody goes out and determines where all the, the cables are buried and that they're worked around. And the reason I ask why it happened isn't just more of a curiosity, but I'm also curious to prevent this from happening with future.
You're, you're certainly accurate there. I mean, locates, locates were done. As to specifically why this, this particular cut happened, I don't have insight into that just yet. However, I do know that, that our operations manager up in the area is working with the contractor to, to get to the bottom line of that and to ensure that we don't experience such an outage again in the future. But, but you're describing the situation as it should, should indeed occur.
Okay. Well, thank you.
And that's obviously something that our office is going to continue to monitor. You know, we've got, I actually don't know if we've mentioned this to you all. We've got Tommy from, as our field report staffer for a little bit longer. And certainly these are the sorts of things that when they happen, you know, we'd like to be able to have somebody that can run out and take a look at those, those events as they're, as they're occurring. With that, if there are any other questions, I'd like to just move briefly into an update on the SEC Lumen transfer. No questions. All right. So this is a segment of our BAO report. And we just wanted to update you on the, the transfer of assets. The SCC did approve it the day after our last meeting, but possibly, yeah, the day after our last meeting under the terms of the settle agreement, settlement agreement that we had discussed previously and which mirrors portions of Lumen's action plan that they sent in a letter to the Board of Supervisors after the January 12th work session. That settlement agreement includes a commitment to rehabilitate degraded infrastructure in our area as well as increased oversight by the SCC following the transfer. Per report from Lumen this afternoon, after an analysis of 72 cables, 67 cables are to receive rehabilitation. All of those have been, have gone through funding, engineering and are in the construction phase. And almost a quarter of the work has been completed with an expectation that all of the work will be completed by the end of July. There have been a number of telephone outages after these last several weeks with some of those per Lumen reportedly related to the rehabilitation work that is ongoing.
Trevor, do you have a question?
I do. Yes, sir. Jason, thanks for this update. This is an item I know that has been specifically important to our Board of Supervisors. And I would suggest, you know, work with Mike and let's get an update to our board. We can do an email update on this, but it would be good to provide this information to them. I'm not sure the timing of our next quarterly report. This seems a little more timely than, than waiting for that.
Absolutely. We're, we're happy to put that together.
Thank you.
Jason, I've got a question about this. I, I don't know what a cable is in this context. Do we have any idea of the number of people who may have been impacted by the, say, 67 cables requiring rehabilitation?
It's actually something that Lumen did provide. I don't have the number in front of me right now, but it was around 3,100. And yeah, and so this is, you know, that 72 cables, as my understanding represents the 72, you know, infrastructure cables, the ones that are running on lines and underground throughout the rural area.
Wow, that's, that's huge. Okay, thank you.
All right. If there are no other questions on that, I'm going to send Mr. Brewer off. Thank you, sir, for joining us.
Thank you for your time, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I move on to our next agenda item? I will assume that was an affirmative.
Sorry, if it's body 2022, you may.
Excellent. So everybody should have received the final draft this afternoon as well as all previous drafts of the three party agreement. TJ PDC, who is on the line, and I'm going to go ahead and promote David Blunt from the TJ PDC to, I don't see Lori, to join us on the panel. They do intend to be under contract with DHCD by mid-June. Firefly is starting to do some of their make, is continuing to do their make ready work and started to do some of their outreach into the community. Promoted or offered to promote Mr. Gary Wood so that he can address that as well. This is the overview of what the plan was that we shared last week, which is that three party agreements amongst all 13 municipalities and the TJ PDC and Firefly are independently obtained. And then they'll be able to go into contract with Firefly and DHCD. I, I will offer, I'm not sure if you guys wanted to hear from Mr. Blunt and Mr. Wood or would like to move directly into Richie's motion that he has prepared.
Well, let's ask the board members. You all have received a copy of the motion and a copy of the agreement, draft agreement. Are there any questions about that? Should we bring in others or are we ready to consider this for a vote?
For what it's worth, I had read through it and it seemed very straightforward to me. I didn't see any red flags. There was nothing that made me nervous. There were some amendments that seemed sensible. I have, anything I would have raised, y'all already took care of in that contract negotiation process. I feel good about it.
Agreed. Thanks for sending that out early so we could take a look at it.
Mr. Deloria has done his usual stellar job in helping us get here.
And no questions from Major Walsh. Thanks.
Then I think we're ready to put this to a vote, Jason. I'm not sure we need to bring in anyone to speak in or answer any questions with regard to it.
Excellent. Mr. Deloria, would you like to read your motion?
I guess that'll be the most efficient way to do it. So the proposed motion is that I move the Board of Directors to approve the three party agreement between this authority, the Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission and Firefly required by the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development to receive 2022 Virginia Telecommunication Initiative grant funding to achieve deployment of a fiber to the premises, last mile broadband network, which will offer services, service to all locations within Alamo County and all other participating counties in accordance with the body grant program requirements. And the motion would be to authorize the chair to execute the three party agreement and other documents needed to participate in the body 2022 project after such documents are approved as to content informed by the county attorney. And so we would need a motion.
So moved. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Very good. Richie, do you want to call the roll call for this vote?
I, I would like to. I will do that. Oh.
Can I ask a quick question of Rich?
Sure.
Just to make sure, just to disclose it. I'm, I'm also on the TJ PDC, so I will be expected, I guess, to approve this. Is that, is that okay?
So, and, and, and I thank you for bringing that up. It, it is my assumption that you do not have a financial interest in the Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission. I, I know, I think I'm comfortable in saying you don't have a financial interest in the, in the broadband authority. So if it's not a conflict of interest, if you don't have a financial interest in the TJ PDC.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I made that clear too.
Good question. Richie?
All right. So this is a vote on the motion. Director Walsh?
Yes.
Director Jaques?
Yes.
Director Henry?
Yes.
Director Fritz?
Yes.
Director Price?
Aye.
And Director Andrews?
Yes.
So the motion passes unanimously.
Wonderful.
I've worked on a lot of contracts for big technology projects. And this is the first I've ever been party to that contains the word witness if or whereas. It's not normally part of these.
Oh, heretofore, those were not included.
I think you did a great job, Richie. I don't care what the others say.
I think it's, it's fossil language from way back when Waldo. And at some point it will be stricken, but it hasn't yet.
I tell you, in my, my day job, I work in a lot of fossil language from way back when. My, my favorite is contracts that include a telex number. That's the real giveaway at how fossilized the language is. This is downright advanced.
Very good. Or do we have any further body 2022 business?
If I may, I'd just like to offer Mr. Blunt and Mr. Wood an opportunity to, to, to offer their thoughts. Beginning with Mr. Blunt, if you would.
Yes, thank you, Jason, Mr. Chairman and members of the Authority Board. Thank you for your action this evening. We certainly appreciate a TJ PDC, our partnership with Firefly, a great partner, as you all know, to work with. But through this process that resulted in the three party agreement, we also want to express our appreciation to both Jason and Mike for their advice and counsel and certainly to Richie for the hard work that he did in, in working with us. You know, to put much of the language that you have before you down on paper. So you are the first to approve the three party agreement. As was mentioned earlier, we're hopeful that all of the other participating jurisdictions will be doing so in the next couple of weeks, first part of June. And we're really anxious to get the ball rolling, get the, the project officially up and running. So thank you again.
Gary Wood will always tell you that Alamo wants to be first, so.
And do I get a chance to just chime in since you called my name?
Absolutely.
Just real briefly, let me thank you for your support and everything you've done before and all your continued support. And tell you, we're really excited to get started on the body project. We have sent out letters to about 500 people in the, who have AEP electric service from Red Hill over to Route 29 and then on through Herds Mountain and back over to where we tie into the CVC lines. That's the first area and AEP is actively doing make ready engineering in that area. They've finished probably a third of their work. As far as the field work before they finish the engineering and then start make ready construction a little later. So we appreciate the, the opportunity DHCD has given us to start some of that work ahead of time so we can hit the ground running when the funding starts flowing. And, and we're looking forward to the day the funding starts flowing because the bills have started coming in and we're paying them. So having said that, I, I just really do appreciate the work that Almar's done to, to support the project and to support rural broadband. I will say I have a, a quick update on the CVC build at some point. If you want to do it now, we can do it. Or it's better somewhere else in the agenda. I'd like to give you a quick snapshot on that.
Here, you've got the, you've got the gavel, so why don't you run with it?
All right. Well, in the Whitehall area, we've been under construction now for a little bit. We've got about 60% of the fiber placed aerially and underground on our northern circuit, which is our biggest circuit. So we've got about 65 miles of fiber constructed. We still have to begin the splicing, but the fiber is the first piece. We put up about just under 15 miles last week. We've got a number of crews up there and they're continuing work. We still have to get our communication hut in. There's a couple of little details to get that moving and as soon as we get the fiber placed, we'll start splicing. We've actually put a temporary light source in so that we can begin splicing. Normally we wait for that communications hut, but we're taking some steps to continue the project and not have it held up by, by not having that hut in place yet. We have not had our intensive marketing campaign up there yet. We did do a mailing, several mailings to let people know we're building the fiber. And we have a just under 50% take rate at this point with signups. We also will start in Red Hill, the CVC Red Hill area, which is much smaller. Either probably next week. This week's pretty much a rain out. We had some crews ready to go over there. But we'll have a couple of crews in there and that'll move pretty quickly as well. It's not a large area. We've got about a 30% take rate there and we have not sent the invitation to. We've got about a 30% take rate there, and we have not sent the invitation to sign up yet. So people are finding us online. We, the one other thing to update you on, since you mentioned the cut cables on the other project, we have had 17 cut cables in the last two to three weeks, a couple of them in Lake Monticello and a number of them out around Prose. They have been mostly smaller, service shop cables. But the problem that we are seeing is the underground locating contractor. There's a company called Stake Center who is contracted by CenturyLink to mark the CenturyLink cables. They are mismarking them. So we had one cable that we cut that was 80 feet from where it was marked to be. We've had a number of them that are 20 to 30 feet away, where we're, they're marking a cable and saying, our cable's over here, you're cleared to plow. And then we plow and we find out that we've knocked a telephone line out. That is indicative of, well, it's hard to see exactly what the problem is, whether it's bad locations on the maps that Stake Center is getting, but it's a really unusual number. And more mismarkings than we normally see. So there may be some new personnel and it may be a training issue. But we have worked with Stake Center, our contractor has, and notified CenturyLink because we wanted to know that we're, we're not just plowing through cables that are marked. You know, they're, they're being mismarked and we're staying, the closest we've been is three feet to one of the marking areas. And there, three feet is the definition of how close you're supposed to be able to go without hand digging. And so we've, we've followed the procedures, but we've run into a lot of them over the last few weeks. And we've tried to, to make sure that people are aware of the problem so that it can be addressed by the marking companies. And we've also tried to let the folks who are interrupted know that we're, we're not intentionally, you know, running wild through the countryside with our plows. We're, we're doing all the things we're supposed to, calling in, getting advanced markings and assuring that there is paint on the ground and avoiding the paint. And we're just still hitting them. So that's a quick update. It's not just in Alamo County, but the most of the arrows of the last several weeks are in Alamo by large, which is kind of indicative of the same marker, the same employee perhaps. So I'm guessing, just purely guessing, that it may be a training issue with some new folks. I know Stake Center's been adding people. I'm hoping that's it, and it's not our intent to knock any communications out when we're trying to extend broadband. That's, that's just not the goal. So that's a quick update. By the way, Midway, just, I may have mentioned this before, was one of the earlier areas. We built that with a VODI grant that the county was supportive of. We're over 75% take rate down there with connections. So we appreciate your support. Clearly, there's a need out in these rural areas, and we're working as fast as we can to get everything built.
Gary, thank you so much for your insight and your updates.
Yeah, I will echo that, Gary. And Gary, if you wouldn't mind just putting some of that detail about Stake Center and the encounters that you've had in the county to Mike and I, that would be really helpful from our perspective, just to keep track of these cuts. Because with so much activity going on, for this sort of problem to crop up as frequently as it is, it's something that we need to keep track of and certainly something that we want to mitigate as best as we can.
Yes. And we've had problems with underground markings. Frankly, it is the limiting factor to have past, we can put in services today. We've got, across the counties where we have fiber in place, we've got 4,200 services waiting to be installed. And we're limited to about 150 a week because when we put in more requests for marking than that, they're either ignored or cleared without marking on the ground. And we've been working with the incumbents to address that. And Stake Center had been more responsive, but now they're responsive and just not accurate, which is not much better than not being responsive. So I'll be glad to give you an update on, a written update and get it from our contractors to give you a little more detail about what's going on. And I'm going to an 811 stakeholder meeting in Roanoke in June that is going to talk about the problem statewide. That is really an area where we need to have it addressed. We would like to move up to 200 installs a week or 250. But we're really limited now by the number of markings we can get, and that's a, that should be an addressable issue. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Jason, are we ready to move on?
I believe so, sir.
I just want to acknowledge before we move on, like if, under in-person circumstances, if this were probably not actually appropriate to do on a, in the county office building, this would be like a champagne mopping moment. Like, I just want to acknowledge the huge amount of work that went in for like a year and change by a huge number of people to get to this point. We just kept like casually take a vote on this, but this is a really big deal. I hope we're able to look back on this as the moment that tipped from a thing that could happen into things actually happening. All respect to Gary, who's actually been making things happen for quite a while.
This is champagne.
Just very impressive work by everybody. I just, I couldn't be happier about this.
Thank you, Waldo.
All right. With that, we're going to move to the VODI 2023 guidelines. So the final guidelines were posted unchanged in any significant way from what we saw last month and what we presented to you all, the definition of broadband. So served versus unserved is still set at 100 over 20. The big thing I want to emphasize today is that the need and the priority is still areas that are unserved at 25 over 3. What that means for the county is that because of our past successes, including as Mr. Jaquith just recognized, our success in VODI 22 is that in the event that, yeah, we don't have any areas unserved at 25 over 3 any longer that aren't covered under VODI 2022 or plans to be covered ultimately through that. So it's possible that at the end of all of this, we're not going to have a project that is going to take priority over other areas of the state. And if other areas of the state have projects serving, targeting residents that aren't being served at 25 over 3 that ends up using that still, the $50 million that the state has allocated. It's possible that this might be the first year that Alamo County doesn't win a VODI 23 award because the areas that we're going to show you and that you guys have seen are primarily areas that are served at 25 over 3, but that are not reliably served at 100 over 20. So with that, I will just move to the maps. They were distributed, I believe, earlier this week. The basis for these maps is some of the work that we did previously to identify areas that lacked affordability. That is a criteria in IIJA as well, and it is now a criteria in VODI 23. And then we wanted to look at areas where the incumbent is using a technology that does not reliably achieve 100 over 20. So the remaining areas in the larger map to the left, the sprinkles of yellow that you see, those are going to be areas in the VODI 22 maps that we've seen where you have those Swiss cheese holes. So it is believed and expected, and something that we can discuss further, that those areas will end up being served by Firefly once the project is completed. But they are not currently included in the project because they also have an incumbent provider that is serving at above 25 over 3. The area, the map on the right focuses on the urban corridor. That is where affordability is at its highest and where the incumbent provider that is not reliably serving at 100 over 20 is most prevalent. The areas in red that we focused on, those are all versions of multifamily housing. So we included the categories for mobile homes, institutional centers, as well as various categories of apartment buildings. And those are high priority areas for us because in terms of affordability, that is where we find the most of our affordability. Other areas that are going to be included in that is our businesses, commercial centers, and some industrial space. And with that, I'll open the floor to Mr. Walsh.
I'm looking at the map shown here on the right, and it's just hard to believe that there isn't faster than 253 choice offered in those areas so close to the city.
So all of those areas are served at above 25 over 3.
What about 120?
They're, they are not reliably served at 100 over 20. The, you know, the incumbent provider recently made a change to their offerings, and they have set the high benchmark, I guess, the low-high benchmark. So the minimum that they are capable of serving is now 100 over 20 in all of their areas. However, we've received multiple reports from lots of residents in these areas, including in a lot of the multifamily units, that those speeds are not being delivered and that reliability is a concern. And as I'll note, reliability is also an IIJA factor. My apologies, my hound needed to express himself. And so the areas that we're looking at, like I said, they are served at 25 over 3. They are not necessarily served at 100 over 20. Moving forward, one of the things that we plan on doing is reaching out to the incumbent provider, letting them know that this is what we're looking at in terms of target areas for VODI 23, and also doing outreach within those communities, either through homeowners associations, the actual leasing agents, and letting them know that these are, you know, giving them the opportunity to use our speed test tool and also report on their own satisfaction in terms of reliability. Those are factors, again, that play into both VODI 23 and IIJA. So what you're looking at isn't just our expected approach to VODI 23. This is also our expected approach to any IIJA bead money. And I'm happy to discuss those further if you'd like. We don't have a full briefing on those. The notice of funding opportunities did get posted, and those will be led by the state. And in fact, the governor recently designated the head of DHCD as the point person in Virginia for all bead and, well, for all IIJA funding.
As a strategy, I mean, the approach you've outlined sounds like the best we can do. The so-called Swiss cheese holes, you know, I'm not sure, in an 18-month time window, there's a lot to be done with those. Whereas these other areas are maybe more on point. Any other comments or thoughts? Yes, Bill?
So I know that, I know that Jason has been in discussions with some of our community development staff in the comprehensive plan, but this is a, this is something I've brought up a couple of different times. It would leapfrogging over the development areas into the rural areas and other areas, and we're leaving these areas behind. And their lack of access to the same high-speed broadband is, it's potentially a significant damper on our development and redevelopment initiatives that we have for this area, including places 29. So somehow rolling that into our comprehensive plan analysis and our own planning efforts should really be undertaken in a significant way. Otherwise, this area could be left behind.
We did meet with Rachel Falkenstein and Tori about incorporating broadband concepts, and we were able to brief them on some of what you're looking at today at that point. And I think that they are aware that this is, this is going to be a factor in development. Because when you consider that in 2025, you know, all luck being with us, the entire rural area will be connected at gigabit speeds, but a significantly smaller portion of the development area will be. And, you know, we shared some of our ideas of how to remedy that in the development area last month. We will, during the BA report, we'll sort of give you guys an update of where we are as far as that and other, other things that we're looking at. But I think you're right, Bill, that this is an opportunity to start to address the deficit that is building in the development area. And I should note, the areas that we're looking at are the areas in the development area where affordability is a factor, and there is a technological deficit. There are other areas within the development area and just outside of the development area that are also in this, in the same predicament, but who, where affordability is not a factor. And so to best align ourselves with the guidelines for both VODI 23 and IIJA, we focused on just these areas, but in the future, we expect to address the broader issue.
Any other comments for Jason?
Jason, I have a question. Has there been any, have there been any updates in the past month or do I haven't paid attention on the FCC's process of developing what areas will be eligible for funding in each state under IIJA?
So with the, the FCC hasn't issued any new guidance. The IIJA guidance is exactly what it was last month and aligns fairly well with the VODI guidance. The NOFO did give us the formula for how much each state will be getting. However, it is dependent on the unserved count that the FCC produces in their maps, which are due in November. So we don't yet know exactly how much Virginia can expect. We are in contact with DHCD to know how best we can advocate for residents of Virginia who are in a similar predicament as our residents in the development area and for whom this could be a really big opportunity to, to provide competition in areas where you have single incumbent providers, but also to catch them up to fiber speed.
Okay, Jason?
All right. So obviously, we will update you guys as we continue to move forward. One thing I did want to mention, and this is something that we have begun discussions with Richie about, we are unclear who will be moving forward in VODI 23. At present, we have ARPA funding that we can apply as match to any application. However, we're not sure whether the MOU that is existing binds the authority's hands in any way, shape, or form. And so we're going to, Richie, if you wanted to address that at all now or if we'll just continue our discussions, but it's possible that what might end up happening is that the county will actually move forward using the ARPA funding that we currently have available to us.
I'm sorry, I didn't follow that. I thought I was paying attention, but would you mind saying it again?
It is something somewhat confusing that was brought up earlier today. But basically, there is concern in the office that the MOU for the authority might limit the authority's ability to enter into an RFP to seek additional fiber broadband expansion opportunities. So we are going to consider that as a possibility. The office, our office, has ARPA funding available as a match towards VODI 23. If there is no issue with the authority, then obviously we can grant that funding. We believe we can grant that funding to the authority for match. Otherwise, instead, we will revert to what the county had done before previously, which is to run the body, run through the body process independent of the authority.
Got it. Okay. I did follow. I just assumed I was wrong. Okay. Thank you. I'm with you now. I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. All right. And with that, we will go to the financial report.
Mr. Henry?
Thanks, Chair Walsh. Members of the board, no changes in the financials. And really, that's been driven by the methodology that CenturyLink uses to, to bill for their work, which is at the end of the project. So I don't expect to see change really until 21 is completed. Based on my read of the agreement that we just approved, it does look like TJ PDC will be TGPDC will be will be invoicing more in increments. Wasn't clear if it's monthly or via milestones. We can get some clarity on that. So once we get into into the Vadi 2022 project, I expect we'll see more, a little more dynamic information in the report. So really, that's a long-winded way to say no changes, sir.
Okay, it's a good heads up that we probably need to budget a 20 or 30% pay rise for the treasurer, so. Alrighty, I think that brings us to the BAO report.
Thank you, Chair. So we're going to run through a few things. We've already covered the CenturyLink Lumen service update, but we're going to discuss the LECAP rollout, our affordability programs, and then some lessons learned. The LECAP, this is the line extension customer assistance program that we discussed and sent out some some guidance on last week or last month has begun. They received public comment through the beginning of May. The bulk of the comments actually had to do with concerns about whether farms and farmers were going to be included. The DHCD is confident that the eligibility requirements are going to meet the needs of low-income farmers, that there's not any need to create a special exemption for farmers to be eligible for this program. The exciting thing and a response to our public comment is that renters will be able to participate based on their eligibility. DHCD is working out the exact details of how this is going to work, but there will be an expectation that landlords will be required to maintain the low-income renters or a low-income renter in that location for a period of time, or they will be required to remit the cost of the 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 cost that was provided to them. But it is really exciting to us that renters are going to be able to participate because a number of the body 2020 participants were renters who were not able to participate because either their landlord or they themselves were not willing to pay the the line extension cost. So this is something that we're really, really excited about. No questions? So our affordability efforts consisted of the IEP, consists of, I'm going to say consists of the IEP. This is the Comcast-specific program that is self-certified. That is something that we've been working on for quite a long time, as well as the ACP bridge, which was going to be a supplement to the Affordable Care Plan. We put together a large stakeholder group and have been working diligently to get this across the line. And as we were preparing to make a final decision on procurement process, we were informed that we don't have a clear legislative authority, specific spending authority to provide this service for low-income households. That question has been batted about a few times, and it is currently with the temporary, the interim county attorney. And so we are hoping to hear guidance on that. This was the original plan for how we were going to structure the program. We are seeking legislative authority to enact a supplement. We've already spoken with Joe Lurch from Baco to ensure that by the next general assembly session, there is a legislative package around this program. So that way, we will be able to enact a program of this sort. Moving forward and how we're likely going to get this program launched is that we need to find a a partner, a charity, a nonprofit that is willing to partner with us to serve as a pass-through entity. Wherein, our office and our partners at DSS will continue to do the main administrative work. However, the paying entity will actually be the nonprofit, and then we will remit payment to them each quarter to refill their coffers. This isn't how we wanted to do it, and it was really disappointing to realize that we're going to have to delay this project because we were really hoping to launch next week. And that was what I was hoping to be able to report to you all. However, without legislative spending authority, we do just have to to recognize that we can't move forward with this program. If the Commonwealth, I'm sorry, if the interim county attorney decides that we do have legislative authority, then we are ready to get this, get this moving as soon as possible, complete with a fully drafted MOU and processes in place for how to manage this. So again, ever.
Yep. May I interject a question for Mr. DeLorean? Richie, could this possibly be something that the Wireless Services Authority Act covers? Could it be the case that ABBA would have this authority?
I, so my my general view is no, because this is, because the network is already set up. It's already in place. It's already being served. So we're not, we're not, we're not creating, we're not building network. We're not the billing agent or anything like that. We don't have control over those those over those facilities. So I I didn't think it was directly within our wheelhouse, and we wouldn't be able to do that. If we had grant authority, which I have had suggested over the years, I would feel more comfortable in saying that it is within ABBA's wheelhouse, but I I didn't think so. On the other hand, I'm just a lawyer and I'm counseling you. If the if the broadband authority were to take a different view and and want to pursue it, notwithstanding my counsel and and in whether any challenge, I don't think there would ever be a challenge, then that would be out.
This is not a function that was originally in in the wheelhouse for the broadband authority. So I'm reluctant to take it on. I was simply looking as a Band-Aid to to help if there was a legal bridge there.
I've worked closely with Jason, I think, and and I share in his frustration. And we really have worked to try to find a way to make make this happen because he really has, it's ready to go. It's locked and loaded and and it's, he's he's ready to get the program going. We just needed to find an outlet for payment. I mean, it really boils down to that. And so the right now, as he's indicated, the options on the table are for the county to essentially make a donation to a charity, which will simply be a pass-through and will make the quarterly payments. I will report, we also approached the Economic Development Authority. It does not fall within their project enable as a program, so they're reluctant to undertake it also. As Jason reported, it is, there's been a lot of discussion and debate amongst county staff on how to make this happen. And he's right in that it has been, I'm not saying punted, but it has been referred to the county attorney who's interviewing people and doing research to to see if there's a way to go forward without having to enlist a charity or another body.
Thank you. Bill?
If if it can't be done, if it can't be done, is it worthwhile having some sort of discussion about this with some more detail at the next ABBA meeting for us to make a decision whether or not we think it is something we want, we can take on or that we want to take on? Just a question.
I tell you what, let's let's put it on the agenda for the next meeting, and we'll see by then where we progressed to. And if we want to have further conversation at that time.
I agree with that.
Supervisor Price, I believe you had a question?
Actually, I, Chair Walsh just said what I was going to recommend, and Mr. Henry concurred. We don't have a final legal analysis on it, so I would be much more comfortable putting it on the agenda for our next meeting rather than proceeding under questionable legal authority.
Certainly, and we will bring, you know, we will prepare for that meeting with sort of a breakdown of the work that we've done, the avenues that we've pursued, and that way the the authority has full understanding of of all of the all of the cul-de-sacs we've been in to to get where we are. So thank you for that. And and sort of, you know, taking that for us, this has been, for me, this has been a very humbling experience and an experience that gives me pause to reconsider everything that we have planned and make sure that as we move forward, we are moving forward with legislative authority where we need it. And so the a number of the things that we've discussed as future plans, you know, those are things that we are going to look very carefully and work with Mr. Delaria to ensure that as we as we consider those plans, those are all on solid legislative footing. And it also, you know, and this probably isn't something Richie wants to hear, but it means we're going to be planning on stakeholder committees, including our council. So that way, early on, we can ask these questions and get these, because the hardest part of all this was the fact that we'd put eight months of stakeholder meetings to get into this, and we were really close to launching when we discovered where we ultimately were. So that was a hard lesson to learn, but you know, it is, it is good to to take the lessons.
Better to learn that sort of thing before the summons appears for you to show up in court and defend what you've done. Looks like we're moving on to an item that Mr. Henry can advise us on, a possible return to in-person meetings.
Chair Walsh, members of the authority staff presented to the board supervisors at the last meeting with the recommendation for for moving forward with with tier two meetings, which are the virtual access meetings that I presented a couple of meetings ago. The recommendation was taught, was was based on, you know, information that we continue to track weekly related to COVID cases in the region and how we're doing in the performance of of these virtual meetings. And also in consideration with the end of the continuity of government ordinance, which ends on September 16th. Long story short, we made a recommendation to the board that that we that we stay the course on virtual until September the first. Board, after a discussion, agreed and accepted that recommendation. And so for planning purposes, our first board meeting in person using the virtual access methodology in room 241, according to my calendar, is is Tuesday, September 27. I think we actually should be meeting on that Wednesday, but I'm not sure about the the scheduling. And I would look at the mic in the broadband office if that if that needs to be adjusted. But the the earliest that we will be back in person, again, with with blended virtual Zoom meeting in room 241 of the county building will be in September. And we owe the board an update at our second meeting in August to make sure nothing has changed with that recommendation. Questions?
I think my suspicion is since we have our annual meeting in August, we probably don't have cast in concrete yet the September date.
That makes sense. My my calendar currently shows Tuesday, the 27th. So whatever day it actually is, it will be.
Not until then.
Yeah. Any other questions on the recommendation or the the action, I should say, from for returning? Okay.
No, thanks, Trevor.
Sir.
That bumps us down to new business. Is there any new business that isn't on our agenda? Not up. Bill Fritz?
I'm actually going to go back. I didn't, I was typing, trying trying to keep the minutes going. Trevor, for many of us on on here have done hybrid meetings, but there are some that have not done them. Will there be a training opportunity? I think Bucky and Baldor, the two, have not had the the opportunity to do a hybrid meeting yet.
I do have a hybrid car.
It's almost the same thing.
It's the the training, we've had training already for for the staff that will be administering the the virtual access meetings, Bill. So as a reminder that the authority will need to be in, the body will be in present in in the building present for the meeting, it's it's the those potentially presenters or 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 you know, citizens that want to observe the meeting will be zoomed in. So really, it will be administered by by Mike and Jason as far as the 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 technology piece of it.
Yeah, my my question really was more to put in every anybody, everybody's mind at ease. It actually is very easy, and and if you need, if you want to know how it's done, you can reach out to a variety of people. They can talk you through it.
And we certainly could have a session ahead of time, but but for for the, you know, for the the authority members, we're going to be sitting in in 241 like we used to.
I I almost remember how to do that, so I think I'll be okay.
Okay. Yeah, we did go through the training, and so we we were planning on early in June having a a mock authority meeting, so that way everybody could sit down in the room. Obviously, we'll we'll push that into September, but we can expect at that August meeting to set a date for a September mock meeting or trial meeting to to run through it.
I'm looking forward to finding out that Jim Andrews is actually six feet 10 inches tall. Is there any other business that we should consider? Seeing no evidence of same, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much for your time this evening. We stand adjourned.
Great job, Jason.